Okay, welcome to the January 16th Planning Board Meeting. We'll start with introductions.
I'm Pamela Berman.
I'm Ben McLaur.
Jeremy Baldwin.
Steve O'Neil.
Dave Robson.
Chaz Doughty.
Michael Page.
And David Nainer with TEC.
All right, we just got two quick items before we get to the agenda, agenda. 147 Frost Road for an update.
Hi you. Good evening, everyone. Sergeant Patel here. I came here last time to give you sort of how we're trying to revitalize the project. And I'm coming to today to give you an update. So as of right now, we've reached out to different contractors. We do have two contractor quotes, one electrical, one paving. And just to give everyone an update, the project is to, the permit is for paving all the areas with detention basins and playground. Some of that work has been done, but majority of paving, line striping, and light poles, curbing, islands, some shrubs and trees, those are all remaining. So the light pole and paving, we have two quotes right now. We have been in discussion with them. We have given those quotes to some of our in-house experts, if you would say, where they have some experience in this field to review. And best practice, as everyone may know, is to shop around. You don't sign up on the first quote that you get. So we are reaching, we have reached out to other contractors to get other quotes so that way we can do an apples-to-apples comparison. Within the next few weeks, we're planning to finalize between the quotes, figure out which contractor is best for this project, get them vetted, and get the full budget approval, which we do have funds available. We will not need to obtain a loan, as I mentioned last time, which we said we would probably need to. We won't need to do that. And as soon as we're, we can vet the contractors, compare everyone, apples-to-apples, make sure the scope is full to minimize any change orders minus any unforeseen, which we, no one's, no one knows that. As soon as we have that, then we'll get them on board, get their contract signed, get certificate of insurance, and start scheduling them to start work, obviously while they're pending. But if there's not good weather, we will use that time to make sure we get our ducks in a row, to get all the material and all the coordination properly on site. Current schedule right now, if everything goes to plan, as soon as the ground is not frozen, we'd be able to start. That's how fast we are moving with contractors to make sure we're following up almost every other day to see where they are with prices. Some of them are dealing with their retainer clients, but we're still on top of them. We're planning to attend the February meeting to give you another update, and we're hoping that we can give you more information. And I'm hopeful by that time we'll have a contract signed, and we'll be able to give you a more definite schedule when we can start. I'm open to any questions if anyone has any.
Jeremy?
I just want to say, appreciate the transparency, the communication that's happening. It sounds like positive news, steps forward.
Thank you.
It's nice that you guys have the funding in alignment. But yeah, no, I appreciate you guys coming in and just letting the board know what you're, what you guys have been up to. So, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
David?
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah, me too. I'm glad things are going in the right direction.
Thank you.
No questions.
Andy, you have nothing, right Dave?
No, I was out there on Monday.
Okay. I guess, when did you say you wanted to come in, February?
Well, when, I believe there's a meeting in February, and we'll, we'll have attendance here.
Weren't they, weren't they on one? Didn't we have them on one? Did we have, did we give you guys, like, weren't you gonna come back in February?
Yeah, you had requested they return in February, so...
Did we give them which meeting?
I think the first one.
The first one.
First one, that's what I thought it was. So, February 6th, I think it is?
February 6th, okay.
Will you have an update for us?
Yeah, will you have anything, or do you want to push it out?
Do you want to push it out till?
If I can.
The end of February 1st week, first meeting in March?
What's the next meeting after that?
20th.
The 20th?
Let's do March.
March?
Yep.
That'll give you plenty of time to get your contract and compare and...
What, the first meeting in March?
Sure.
March 6th.
March 6th, yeah.
Good with you?
Yes.
Can I have a...
Well, we're just having a discussion, so we don't need a motion, I don't think.
All right, all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me time.
You're ready to roll. We get some good weather.
Yes, we'll be lining everything up, thank you.
Excellent.
All right, next up, Flint's Corner Development Proposal Feedback. Gentlemen, I got three. How are you, Dave?
I'm well, how are you?
Good.
Evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Joe Pesnola from Hancock Associates. We are here just informally to discuss the Flint's Corner project, which we had before you. I don't know how long ago it was. It was several years ago. That project went all the way through this board and got approved for 96 units under the mixed-use overlay district. So since then, lots happened. The original developer has gone away, basically couldn't see it as feasible. And Mr. Guthrie's now has the property under agreement, and we're looking forward to hopefully coming before you for site plan review, but there are some, some changes to the plan. Originally, it was, it was permitted under the mixed-use overlay, kind of combining Flint's Corner retail with the proposed residential as the mixed-use. Due to the changes in the Duffy family and negotiations with Mr. Guthrie, that's not happening. It's really segregated, and now this is, we're looking at trying to develop the excess land at Flint's Corner under the mixed-use overlay. And originally, we thought we could take down the back piece where the original community gardens were proposed, and do something back there for, in a, in a commercial-type use to satisfy the mixed-use. Fast forward, there's environmental contamination out there with regards to the, the former cleaners, and some of the contamination is behind the building, behind the existing Flint's Corner building. So it's, it's not possible to take that, that part of the site down, as far as, as far as purchasing that and doing something back there that would, that would satisfy the mixed-use component. So we're, we're kind of looking at, this is the original, original plan. This is actually a version that, that had a building back there behind Flint's. So now we're looking at a version that would just have the three buildings. And what Mr. Guthrie would like to do is essentially the same footprint, the same layout, four-story with parking under, but because it's, his model's a little different than Mr. Finnegan's model, which was luxury condominiums, we're, we're thinking now apartments. So the unit sizes are smaller. So in the same footprint, same height, we can do 48 units a building. So this would go from 96 to 144 units. We haven't designed anything yet. We haven't flushed it through because we're, we had to deal with the environmental issue and, and all of that first. And once we've gotten past that, and we think we've got our handle on it, the development side of the site, the, the portion of the site with the three buildings on it is clean. So we know that. We've got our own LSP on our, our team that says that, and can make the money people happy that, that there's no issues there. We come down to the issue of the mixed-use. This is mixed-use overlay, so there needs to be a component, some kind of a commercial component. The bylaw doesn't define what that needs to be. There's some parameters that doesn't define how big it needs to be. So what we're thinking, and would like to pose it to you all, is something within one of the buildings, the, the building closest to Westford Road, like a coffee shop on the first floor that was open to the public, that had, that was a retail component, that was of, you know, modest size, but that would satisfy the, the mixed-use portion of the bylaw. In our minds, as you know, the state needs housing, and I think the, the focus here is to provide housing and to work within the confines of the mixed-use overlay bylaw. We, we need to, we need to have a commercial component. So that's really the, the focus of why we're here tonight, just to, to kind of lay out that quandary that we have, that, that issue that we have, with our possible approach to it, and get your feedback.
Just a couple of questions, I think, before we go around. You're talking about increasing the units, making them smaller, like one bedrooms, two bedrooms?
Ones and twos, yeah. We have a very similar product in Chelmsford to this product here. It's four buildings, three, four stories, and one two-story. Where's that located? Turnpike Road, 104 Turnpike Road. Obviously, you're welcome to visit it, welcome to bring you there. Very similar product, probably, most likely the same architect. The one beds are 750 to 805 square feet. The two beds are high nines to maybe 1,100 at the biggest.
Yeah, and for context, Finnegan and Kates were proposing all two-bedroom luxury condominiums at 1,600 square feet, so...
So you think the biggest unit would be about 900?
About 1,100, I think.
1,100?
Or just under, yeah, that's our biggest.
Just under.
We may add in a combination of, the market's changed a little bit. We did that one 2018, 2019 was the build-out. There's a little bit of a market now for a bath, I mean, a, a study with a one-bed, with a study, smaller room study, not a second bedroom, so we're gonna explore that a little bit. We're seeing that demand over in Chelmsford more now. That one was predominantly two beds when we did that, and now we've got a shortage of one beds over there. So we're gonna try and play with the mix, but sort of fix that demographic if we get past this hurdle, quite honestly.
So the plan is to keep them apartments?
Correct.
Yeah, this would be rental when, when the former project was, was for sale.
Yep.
Condominium.
Hundred percent rentals. We have, we understand you have an inclusionary component to your bylaw, we understand that, we're on board with that.
Which is a change from the previous project. Previous project got through before inclusionary and was, had no affordability.
Yeah.
That's a benefit of, of the...
So you put the affordabilities right inside?
Yeah, yeah. We did that in Chelmsford as well. Theirs is an overlay district as well that we were in.
Do you, now I'm familiar with your project out there. I think it's a nice project. Do you plan on any, like, facilities for the people?
Most likely, in, in one of the buildings. So, you know, when we say 144 units, it's probably fewer than that, because we had the space over there, much larger parcel, to do a community building.
Correct.
With a pool. The pool is, quite honestly, probably a mistake, but there's really not a market for it. Chelmsford requires a full-time lifeguard, so it's, it's quite expensive, cost prohibitive. In this particular setting, if we can get through that retail component, maybe there's a, you know, one of the things we focused on over there was a community gathering space and a fitness center, fairly substantial, but maybe in this particular setting, if that, you know, random coffee shop idea fits with a co-work space that was open to the public, you know, almost like an informal Starbucks model, if you will, we're open to something like that, because certainly our tenants like that co-work space. We have a conference room over there, and like I said, you're welcome to come see it.
All right, start with Jeremy?
So I guess, just kind of addressing the rest of the board, we all know, well, I think we're going back to when I was in a, geez, probably seven or eight years ago at this point for the Flint's Corner project. And then we also have the other overlay district where that one fell through as well. We've had issues with kind of the overlay district in general. We've talked about it in the zoning review committee about, we wanted to tackle it again, about, we've, we've talked about the issues with it and to accommodate it and bring it up to kind of modern day, when that was created was early 2000s, I believe. So we know there's issues with that zoning bylaw to begin with, to make it fit with developers and the community. We were, we handed out waivers on a lot of things to make it work for the previous project, and we also were working on it with the one that was down near the fire station. Now, the, I guess, I'm not, I'm not at all opposed to this project, I'm just wondering how it fits in with what we end up really wanting, because, or do, do we really want to start addressing that bylaw to begin with? It would be great if we could in the zoning review, but that's, that is coming to an end. I think we have one more meeting next week just to talk about definitions. So I don't know if we address it as a board and make it an expedited thing that we can start to tackle as, with the planning, to, to make it accommodate, or really have a conversation to make it a viable project. I think it'd be great if we worked as a team to come up with a solution that worked for you and also worked for the town and the board, to make it, make it viable for everybody. We know there's, there's issues with the bylaw. That thing, it was kind of created around making a Newberry port in, here in Tingsborough, which doesn't really, doesn't really function in suburban community like this. One of the, one of the flaws I see with the original bylaws is having commercial underneath a building in this nature. I don't want to see something just go vacant and force that down somebody's throat, and then eventually it, it just ends up being residential anyway. So if we can start accommodating things that, you know, there's, what's, what's the recreational piece gonna be? Is there gonna be a component to that? What does the commercial look like? What is it gonna be rehabbed on that existing building? How does it make it work for everybody? I think that's what we're trying to look for.
Well, yeah, just, just point of clarification, the Flint's Corner retail is not part of this project now.
Oh, so it's just separating, they're separating to the, to the right, I'm assuming, basically, where the loom is now, the big pile.
I didn't know.
Whatever the Duffys do with, with Flint's Corner is, is up to them.
So could you speak to where that line would essentially be?
Yeah. Essentially, it's, it's just here.
Is that an A and R that's gonna be issued, or is that already there?
There was already an A and R. It was, it was envisioned as being two sep, broken into two separate parcels, and we may have to adjust the line on the A and R, but the, the idea was that there were, that, that existing retail served as the mixed-use, which, which was controversial. There was definitely some trepidation on, on some of the board members with regards to, is, is that really what we meant to, to have? The, the mixed-use concept is, is difficult, and in communities that we've worked in that have, have required it, it's been a, it's been a struggle. And as, as you said, you don't want vacant spaces. You want to come up with something that's, that's viable. Even, I was on the zoning board for 20 years in Hudson, and we, we had a project right downtown that we built, and it looks like the building's been there for 100 years, and we thought, perfect, that retail on the first floor. And even those spaces on Main Street downtown were still difficult to, to rent. It, it just, there's just something about it. And residential developers do residential, retail developers do retail. And when you put them together, it really, it's, it's difficult and it's challenging, but we're happy to work with, with planning staff and the board to, to try to come up with something and maybe use this as a test case to, to hone the bylaw into, into not only what you want, but what's, what, what might be palatable and doable for, for the development community.
I, I think in the original project, that that was all housing anyways to the right and to the left. There was no mixed-use in the residential, correct?
Correct.
So that's basically what you're gonna keep now. Want to keep that, add something there, and just break away from Flint's totally.
Yeah, we need full separation from the Flint's Corner parcel for obvious reasons, you know.
David?
I'll hit you with a number of things. How many, what's the percentage you're gonna have, a one-bedroom to two-bedrooms for the apartments of this?
I want to say we did, of 168, we did two, in the, in the Chelmsford project, and again, it may be modified a little bit to, to accommodate the current market conditions. We did 95 one-beds, uh, two-beds rather than the rest were...
So what would this project be, out of the 144?
If I had to speculate, 55-45, maybe even closer to 50-50 would be my guess, is where the market is right now.
All right. So the way this project got off the ground originally, and I think maybe you got a little background on this, you've been around for a while. This was sold to taxpayers as commercial property out front, and we'll say at the time, pretty high-priced condo living. So that's still what I'm looking for, honestly. I personally don't like apartments with commercial property, so that's why it was kind of separated. It was a pretty good thing for everybody, because one of the biggest problems that you have is where the kids play, they're all in the parking lots, they got their scooters, they got their bicycles, and now you have people coming and going in cars. So I'll leave my thoughts at that right now, just so you know where I'm coming from. There was a garden there, there was all sorts of stuff that was going on at this property. So I'll turn it over to Chaz.
May I ask if the for-sale product was limited to 55 and over, or was that just general?
It was 55, no, it was general. It was just upscale condo units with parking underneath, garden area out back, behind Flint's Corner.
So the presumption was they wouldn't have children?
No, they could have, they could have children, but there was the commercial aspect, we were getting all over on one side, we were getting our commercial with this. We were getting two other buildings in the Flint's Corner side, and they were gonna renovate Flint's Corner. So this whole center, that whole center, that whole parcel was gonna be all brought, we'll say, up to prettiness.
Gotcha. Yeah. So it's, it's less about the children, more about the, what was happening on the Flint's Corner parcel itself?
Absolutely.
I understand, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Chad?
Sure. If you're gonna upgrade this by 48 units, you're gonna put a real strain on that parking in that spot. How do you plan to address that? They barely have enough parking spots as it was.
Yeah, I mean, the, the demands on a rental project for parking are less than, than on a condominium project. Finnegan and Kates wanted two parking spaces per unit, because that's, that was their, their marketing, the demographic they were marketing to. When you sell a condominium, a 1,600-square-foot two-bedroom condominium, that market wants two spaces. When you talk about rental with a, with a 50-50 mix of ones and twos, the parking demand comes out to about 1.6, 1.7. So we would first, we would look at that and then look at the, the parking layout between the surface park, the, the new surface parking on the, on the development lot, as well as the, the subsurface parking, and try to hit that mark.
Okay. How are you gonna access these buildings? With a separate driveway in?
That's one thing that we, we've worked out with the Duffys that, you know, for that separation, we'd be looking at developing a, a new entrance. We had a shared entrance in which the Mass Works grant had kind of facilitated shifting the entry into Flint's Corner over with the, with the vision that it was gonna be shared. But given the nature of the split, we'd be looking at putting an entrance further...
It's west.
Further west. And we, the original plan had a big detention area there, so we would have to modify that and kind of split the detention area on either side of a, an entryway that came in.
The piece out back behind the Flint's Corner building would be gated off at our lot line. There'd be separation between the two parcels.
Okay.
So we'd go out onto Tingsborough Road directly, and we'd have an emergency access out the back to go out behind the building on Flint's Corner, not an accessway there for general public.
So that's why I brought this plan, which was an older version of the, the plan that the board ultimately approved, and that, which had a separate entrance for, for the residential piece.
As part of this project, I would like to see a light going into the parking lot of the plaza, because right now, there's no light there, and it's very difficult to see where the entrance to get into that parking lot is off of Westford Road.
More illumination than a streetlight, is what you're suggesting. I got you.
Absolutely. There's no, not even a streetlight there.
I understand, yeah. I meant, no traffic light.
Every time I go there, I'm like looking to try and figure out where the heck the entrance is, and it's, it's a...
Yeah, we certainly look at that, just as a safety improvement of the general area.
As part of this project's approval, and part of the mixed-use, there, there's supposed to be some sort of a component that, that the community can use, which is why we kind of put that garden in there and that sort of thing. What are you proposing to, to put in for the community to use?
Well, that's another piece of the, the puzzle, and as Mr. Guthrie said, you know, the, there could be this coffee shop slash workspace, flex space, that, that could be open to the, to the community. So I, I think we, we need to explore that and, and, and kind of bang it around with the board with regards to what, how the board feels that that, that requirement could be satisfied. To look at the bylaw to see exactly what that public benefit portion of the bylaw is, and, and, you know, try to, try to come up with ideas that, that, that do that. We had the community garden idea. We can't do that community garden where we had it planned, because there's contamination there, and I don't think that's a good idea. So, yeah, we've got to come up with, we, we know that that's part of the bylaw, and we need to come up with a plan that's palatable to the board.
The, in the one-bedroom apartment, you were talking about doing sort of an office area?
Perhaps, yeah, yeah.
Would, would that be big enough to put a bed in, so that all of a sudden now you've really got a two-bedroom?
No, no, that wouldn't be the goal. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the sewer capacity for that.
Okay, I understand that, but would the size of the room be big enough to do it? Whether, I mean, a one-bedroom with that type of a spot, boom, crib goes in there.
Yeah.
And the next thing you know, the child's outgrowing the crib, and now all of a sudden you've got a bed in there.
Yeah, I see your fear there. Yeah, I do.
So I just...
I don't know if maybe we, we could combine that off of the bedroom, sort of with a glass door attached to it, so it would kind of work as a home workspace, but, you know, I think if it's a general concern of the board, we could look at hard at maybe not doing it. You know, it is in a lot of other communities. I don't know how they address that, or if they just turn a blind eye to that, but, you know, it's obviously taxing if you have, if you have a additional car requirement for that, you know, independent of a toddler. You know, if somebody sneaks a roommate in there, brother or sister or something, then our parking gets taxed, you know. Right now, we're at a 1-7 in Chelmsford, and the parking's abundant, even with some snow storage over there, so, you know, I think in that situation, we'd have to look at it, because I think parking here is pretty, pretty conservative.
And then this workspace conference room, what would the size of that be? Would that be something to be off of Starbucks, or whatever the coffee shop might be, or...
I think really, from a conceptual standpoint, it's, it's a conversation with your group and maybe even with your planner to get the ball rolling on what the community need is. You know, we're trying to think outside the box here, because that Flint's Corner retail component is not available to us. And we don't have a handle on that. We obviously have ample space. These buildings are 75 by 210 or 205, so they're big. There's certainly plenty of room on the first floor of one of these to accommodate, you know, even if it was four units, to allow for the gym, an office for the rental unit, and then this co-work space, so to speak.
Yeah, we just, we just did a project in Lombro, and it's got a fairly healthy amenity space, and they've, they've got a library with a large conference table, that can be a workspace. They've got separate kind of isolation chambers, like cubicle-type things with glass, glass doors that are, that are workspaces, and they're all figured out. They even have a podcast studio. So it's, it's kind of a, just a space that can, can serve many functions. For people that, for people that are working from home and don't, don't want to be in their apartment, they want to come out and interact socially and, and get, get into a different space.
Our clubhouse at the other complex, which is 168 units, is about 4,000 feet. It's a little oversized, we've got a big fitness center in there. And then our co-work space and our gathering space is probably a little oversized, so I think combined, the whole thing could maybe come back to 25 to 3,000 in, in that first floor, which these decks are 15,000 feet apiece, 75 by 200. So there's plenty of space in there. You know, with the elimination of units, of course.
And the, the coffee shop concept, would you have a drive-through for that, or...
No, no.
Okay, so it'd be strictly, you'd have to have some sort of parking for that alone, separate from everything else, which...
I mean, what we're doing in Chelmsford right now, we've added some, some EV chargers in there. We, you know, in 2018, 2019, they weren't as predominant as they are now, so maybe under, with some planning, we added some, a couple of fast chargers here, where someone could come in, fast charge, go in, get a coffee, sit for a little while, and then get on their way. But we'd have to obviously have dedicated parking for that, even in the... But we'd have to obviously have dedicated parking for that. Even in this situation, we'll probably get a little more heavily into the EV charging synopsis here. When we did that one, we threw two posts out front that were free and, and you know, they're outdated. Now we've brought a consultant in and we're adding in, in ten, ten units for EV parking over there. Because our first rental at a hundred and sixty-eight units, we had one car. Now there's fifteen over there. The market's coming, coming, sort of ramped up and maybe it's slowing down a little bit on that EV stuff. But there's still going to be a need for these going forward.
That, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to say the square footage of each unit, the seven-fifty, nine-hundred square feet, isn't very big. And it would be almost.
It's seven-fifty, uh, eleven-hundred.
Seven-hundred, but for the one-bedrooms, the seven-hundred-and-fifty, it'd be hard to put two bedrooms in it if you had a nice layout. The eleven-hundred, the two bedrooms, you know, depending on how many you put in. But if maybe you guys do like just a couple of sketches, floor plans, maybe that we can, you know, for next time around when you come back in. And some ideas, I don't think the board's opposed to meeting with the town planner for what might go into these units. For that, so, and if we have any ideas on this board, we can kick it to the planner and you guys can get together.
Yeah, we're happy to do that, work offline, not take.
Yeah, and to see, you know, if we can get the components in, like Jeremy says, to change them. I know Dave has some concerns. We all do. And get that community component involved. And if we can work together, like Jeremy says, who knows, it could be, you know, the start of the way it should be, you know? I think you and the business and the board needing or wanting to, you know, address all the concerns and the bylaws. I think, you know, putting our heads together, who knows what we can come up with, see what happens.
Chair, can I grab a couple more questions? The Chelmsford ones you did, are those all rentals?
They are.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Where do you propose to put the new driveway if you move the driveway more west? Where's it going to be?
Probably right where.
You know the area pretty well? Tell me your business around it that's going to come out in there.
Well, you've got Ting Terry and then, then the small red house.
Across the street, where's it coming out?
Right across, right across.
From, from the construction company?
Yeah.
Hopefully not directly.
That, their entrance is, is here. And then you've got the new retail building here. I'm not sure where that is.
Where would you rather see it, Dave?
I'm just saying, it's just kind of, we, we just spent all the time to reconfigure that whole intersection. So we got to make sure we get that right if this does go in there.
Yeah, this, this got moved out this year, but that was staying. And then would, would have something, something more down here.
And I will iterate again, we're losing a huge commercial component out of this project that was originally planned to us. Because there was two buildings out front of Flint's. I don't know where Flint's went awry, would not develop in the whole thing.
Out front of Flint's building, right?
And they were supposed to, like I said, they were supposed to rejuvenate the whole area.
The, the proposed new buildings on Flint's was the, the bank here.
The bank of buildings here. And that was, that was five thousand square feet.
Yep, they were added, correct. All right. Any more questions, Jeremy, follow-up?
Michael, you got anything?
No, I have no questions. I mean, I think reality is we need housing and we're going to have to work with the, the mixed-use component to get stuff in there. So I think it would be great if we could see, you know, the future plans and what you guys have planned and work with them to discuss it. But, yeah, the, the rec area for, the Chelmsford, is that public, the recreational aspect?
No.
So this would be though, in this scenario?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what the board, you know, needed to see to kind of get through there, you've got a retail bylaw in your overlay, you know? They didn't over there. They just had that Bill Wrecker Road to Mill Road to Turnpike Drive, six-hundred acre overlay district where they had a lot of flexibility in, in what could go in there. You know, they were trying to revitalize those big buildings down on Bill Wrecker Road. They were empty and, and they were losing a bunch of guys over to the tower in Lowell there. They lost that big group there. So they were trying to revitalize that. Part of it was, was residential. We got in early on that, soon right after bylaw passed and was able to put that piece up. But no, it doesn't have a, a, a community-based recreational component, no.
All right.
Just to the boards too, just remember what these apartments put on for the police, the fire and the ambulance. And we can all go to the police station and pull up the records from every one of the things we have in Tingsborough right now. This was, this was proposed as an upscale condo unit from Finnegan when it was presented to us, so.
All right. And just one more point. Yes, the zoning bylaw committee is going to meet to make some changes in the bylaws, but it's the definitions. We will not be rewriting the, a mixed-use.
That's why I was saying it, it would have to come probably from, from us, like we have done in the past where we've worked on some components. Maybe we have a, we have working sessions that we start talking about. If we, if we as a group collectively think that it's something we want to tackle.
All right. Can I ask one question relative to the feasibility of the, the prior applicant? And it's, it's the for-sale product that you speak of. Is that, just so we can do our feasibility, is that something the board is more interested in? But without the inclusionary component? Because I think that's how that was originally approved. And I know it had some retail component in there. So I, I understand.
I don't think you can get around the inclusionary part. Those had inclusionary in them.
The for-sale?
Yeah.
No.
I don't believe it did.
We, we.
They got it right before it.
The application came in.
Okay, so that's all gone.
Adoption of the.
So now we have to follow it.
Correct. Yeah, that's where I think they struggle with their feasibility is when they came back from, they needed to come back for modification to kind of get themselves somewhat separated from Flint, from a legal standpoint, because Mr. Duffy had passed. And then, then they were then falling in under the modification into the inclusionary component, which I think they struggle to make their numbers work at that. It's a little easier in a rental market, a seven-hundred-and-fifty unit, a square foot unit, than it is with a sixteen-hundred high-end for sale. That's became one of the problems. So I'm just trying to get clarification from you guys because we can look at that for-sale stuff. But if we're going to be subject to that inclusionary, then we probably will not get on that road.
Yeah, it's also important to note that this, this project comes with about a million dollars worth of sewer infrastructure upgrades that, that need to get done to support, support the project. But, and we, we, we were being told by the sewer commission that, that those, those modifications are now necessary. Before it was, it was, they were going to be implemented after the second building was done. Now the sewer commission is saying they need to be done now. So they're going to, they're going to renegotiate the, the deal there as far as the timing on those sewer upgrades down on, on Wharton. But that's a million dollars worth of work that, that's, that this project has saddled with. Well.
I was under the assumption that that sewer had to be fixed before, when this was agreed on, and if it was just one building?
It, it was about the timing on this.
When the occupancy of the other stuff was phased.
They were going to, they were going to get occupancy on the first building. Then they had to put the money in escrow to get the building permit for the second. And before the building permit on the third, they had to.
I think we might be getting a little ahead of ourselves.
I would agree with that, yeah.
So, you know, we can go off on a tangent here. I'm glad you came in. I'm hoping maybe we can get together, come up with some ideas, maybe, you know, come back in in a month, two months, whatever. We come to an agreement or some, you have an idea to bring in for the, for the commercial component of it.
Yeah, if you could share your thoughts with, with your planner.
And then you'd.
Or workshop with him and.
Very happy that you want to listen to it. You'd like to see in there and work with us.
I'll get a little more information on the one, one-and-a-half bed, two-bed stuff. Just, just to clarify some of that, when you, when you expand into a one-and-a-half bed, you take the space from somewhere and it usually comes out of the two beds. So you end up with fewer two beds and more one-and-a-half. So you know, you're concerned, are you, are you adding more bedrooms without really declaring it on your permit? Doesn't, doesn't happen necessarily.
I, I think maybe when you come back, you can bring in maybe some floor plants from over there similar. And then if anybody has any ideas.
Yeah, certainly if you want to go over to Chelmsford, take a look or take a tour, I can arrange that through your, through your coordinator pen and, and show you around a little bit. Show you the units, like seven-fifty on paper or eleven-hundred, you know, get in it and see it, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Eight-hundred square feet isn't very big, you know, to put, you couldn't squeeze it too bad. I mean, you could, but you'd have no living space, you know?
We can try and get through the two hurdles presented tonight before we go much further.
You wouldn't have four kids in there like I had today.
But.
I listened to that call.
All right, thanks. I appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. Thanks for wanting our input.
Thank you.
Hopefully you're building soon. All right. Next stop, eleven-twenty-five Ingles Road, continued from one-two-twenty-five.
Hi.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Deshia Tony. I'm an engineer with MBI Land Development, having offices in southeastern Mass. I'm here before you tonight for the proposed A and R we have for eleven-and-twenty-five Ingles Road. On behalf of my applicant Connell Construction Corp., represented by Scott Connell. This is a fairly straightforward proposal that we have. There are two existing lots on Ingles Road having frontage already. The lot number twenty-five, which is map nine, lot fifteen-two, that one is owned by the applicant Connell Construction Corp. Our proposal is to have a parcel of land that is around seven acres granted from eleven Ingles Road, which is the next door of Butter. And grant that or convey that to number twenty-five Ingles Road. We're proposing to maintain the existing frontages along Ingles Road. I would like to note that for number twenty-five, it is, does have a frontage of seventy-one feet, which is less than the allowable frontage or the minimum frontage in the town of two-hundred feet, but we have that noted as, noted as an existing non-conforming feature. Number eleven does have more than that, two-hundred feet of frontage. But because we're not proposing any adjustments to that frontage, and again, keeping it as existing non-conforming, our hope is that since this is a simple conveyance, that the board would approve that and not have any issues. And we did have this reviewed by T E C Engineering. I can quickly run through their comments. They had three of them. Their first comment was essentially what I just said. They noted that the minimum two-hundred-foot lot frontage is required. And it note, or they note that map nine, lot fifteen-two, which is twenty-five Ingles Road, is existing non-conforming. The second comment that they have is related to the zoning table where we list out our minimum lot areas, which is exclusive of non-contiguous upland area. So that was oversight on our part where we adjusted the plans. I have the revised plans here today. That just excludes that non-contiguous area. If you notice in the top left corner, it's bisected by wetlands and it's a little intermittent stream. So that upland area beyond that is just excluded from the overall upland area. But we're still well over the minimum lot area as far as conformance goes. The last comment they have, just kind of summary was, they said that the submitted A and R plan proposes to adjust property lines. So seven-point-two-four acres of land will be transferred from eleven Ingles Road to twenty-five Ingles Road. With this change, both aforementioned parcels will continue to meet Tingsborough zoning bylaws with the exception of the existing non-conformance as mentioned in comment one. Pretty much what I just went over. So with that in mind, it's our hope that the planning board can endorse this A and R plan tonight. And if the board has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Dave, we went through it. What's, the seventy-one feet existing already?
It's an existing non-conformance, correct.
So what are they looking to separate out?
They're looking to the big kind of.
Two lots on the left.
So if you look the kind of grayed-out square in the middle of your page, that is being transferred from eleven, which is on the right, to the, to twenty-five on the left. So it's that, that grayed-out area is essentially that seven-point-two acres is being transferred from the right lot to the left lot, essentially.
And it doesn't affect any of the other zoning?
No, both, both lots after still meet zoning bylaws.
Jeremy?
Don't have any comments right now?
David?
Hold off.
So I'm assuming that the reason for this is to, to build some houses in there, right?
Yeah, that is correct. In the future, we do plan on doing a subdivision using that frontage along Ingles Road on twenty-five. We do plan on coming before the board for a preliminary subdivision to discuss this, go through our concept drainage design, our concept lot layouts. And that way, if there's any issues, we can nip them in the bud early on and then we'll come back for a definitive subdivision down the line.
So access to that, to this new parcel that you're developing is going to be the seventy-one feet?
That's, well, that will be the entrance for the new proposed subdivision road. So when we create our road with a future cul-de-sac, that would have the minimum frontage for all those new proposed lots.
So isn't that going through wetlands?
That is correct. We do, we have had conversations already with the Conservation Commission, just as a preliminary measure, to show them what our plan is. We're planning on doing replication for that front area to allow us to get access to the rear of the site. We did have discussions and sent them an email. That's part of the reason why we are going through the preliminary phase. So we can discuss it with them as well as you guys at the planning board and forestall any questions that may arise. And then that way, when we do go for definitive, we'll be filed with the Conservation Commission as well. Make sure that we get approval for the proposed alteration and replication.
So, I mean, you've got wetlands all over the place in this, in this piece of property. I, I guess we'll have to wait and see what we come up with. But conservation seems to be amenable to this?
Yes, that is correct. We showed them our concept plan of our proposed lot layout along with the proposed alteration and replication. And they were amenable to it. Again, that, granted, it's a preliminary measure. We haven't gone through the full design process. But from the first look, they were amenable to it.
And how many houses you thinking about putting in here?
Uh, we're proposing seven lots in the future.
Cam, do we get anything?
Do we get that?
Do we get anything from Conservation on this?
No.
No, but, um, so back to our engineer, Dave, Dave, so this meets all town criteria?
As written, it does, yes.
As written. Okay. Um, both from the board or just in endorsement?
I'm not for it until I see more from Conservation.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the A and R for eleven-and-twenty-five Ingles Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Further discussion, please?
Yeah.
So we have, it's an A and R. We have no choice but.
We have no choice. You, you can, by law, that's, it's all set, so.
Well.
Okay, that's, that was all I wanted to make a point of.
In favor?
Do a roll call, I guess, I guess.
In favor?
In favor.
Stane?
In favor.
Three. Yeah, I guess you can both.
He can't.
I'll hear it?
Nope.
It passes.
Passes, don't need them. All right, all right. Thanks. Good luck.
Should I just leave the mylar and the plans with you guys to have them sign?
Yes.
And leave it with, uh, yeah. All right, next up. Patriot Road, continued from one-two-twenty-five.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Boland with Stampkin McNary. We're here tonight with a.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. What's your name?
Jonathan, Jonathan Boland, Stampkin McNary.
Yep.
And we're here tonight seeking endorsement as an approval not required at a property at fifty-two Patriot Road. There's an existing house. We're going to divide it to create five additional lots. So it'll be a total of six lots. And all of the lots conform to the requirements of the zoning bylaw. So if there are any questions?
Um, we went through this last time. You said everything is good. I think the board members had maybe a couple of questions, Jeremy?
I think it's just odd the shapes of the lots. So it's like, I, I look at it logically and I'm like, why don't you just take every line and just bring it straight back? I guess there might be some things on site.
The topography and the soil testing kind of informed how the, the lot would be shaped. So that, you know, we can.
That all of it? It just seems strange. Like you have that U-shaped one and then the corner, I think it's, the ones that I, I took. Lot, lot four. Lot four, lot six, those are just very strange. And I guess, like lot six, where would, you're putting a house in that location. Maybe it functions because of the contours of the site and like you said, the soil testing, but lot four is just really odd. Why would you have it wrap all, is that just because of trade off of land or what?
Yeah, it has to do with getting the area and, and again, just where the soil testing, the soil testing worked to, to get enough septics in.
It's odd, but.
David?
I'm all set.
So if I'm mowing the lawn. On a Saturday morning and I'm going to speak circling to my neighbor's house, how's that going to go over, do you think?
You know, I mean, I guess that's something they'll have to work out.
Yeah, I guess it is. Uh, I just, I'm, like Jeremy, I'm just really baffled by the way this, can you be a little more, when you say issues here to do this, can you be a little more specific, I mean, is it wetlands or?
There's no wetlands, it really is just the, the topography and it, it's, I, I believe it's somewhat rocky. So where, it was where the areas that we could find to put the septic systems, this sort of informed how, how the lots were going to be shaped.
So again, getting back to lot four. Is it just so that you'll have that size of a lot?
It has to do with, yeah, getting the size of the lot and, and where we can fit the septics, yeah.
Where would the septics go, but excuse me, do you have, do you know now where the septics would go in here?
Um, I can take a look, I had, I have a.
Just, we'll let Chaz finish, but I think what he's saying is, is there any way to redraw this line so it's a little straighter? And you don't go past the, and still get what you need?
I mean, I think to get the area and the, the frontages, it, it really, this is how it worked out.
Well, it's an A and R, I mean, we have no choice, but, I think that was something, is, is, is the A and R, is that a state law that we don't have any say over it? Or is that?
State, right, Dave? A and R's, a state law, governed by the state. And it meets all our requirements, alright.
You're not necessarily going to be clear cutting that whole thing, so that, that whole hook there is going to probably still be all wooded, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Probably. Who knows, pickleball court.
Shed on that side and then the house on that side.
All those in favor or do we need a vote?
I need a motion.
Motion.
Yeah, good, Jeremy.
Alright, likes to make a motion for the A and R of Patriot Road, continued from one to twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, hearing none opposed, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, four oh five Middlesex Road, continued from one to twenty-five.
Yeah, and sorry, just one note on that one, they also reached out asking when you guys wanted to do the tour. I know last time you had mentioned you guys wanted to go in and see, so if you wanted to throw out some times for me to bounce back to, for Yellow House?
Where are they?
They're not here.
Then when they're here, when, when they come, we'll entertain that, Mr. Chair, you go with that?
Well, you, hang on, are you here for, no, he's. No, you're not here for, did I say Middlesex Road, right? Yeah, no, I think we had turned, you got a number?
Sorry, well, I, I didn't clarify that well, so they're, they're, they were here for an ASBIL, they're not here. The, the tour was something you guys had asked for previously.
Yep.
Um, he couldn't make it today, he's going to make it to the next build, or the next meeting. But in the meantime, if you guys still wanted to do the meeting, or like the tour, the facility, if you wanted to give me some times at work for you guys, I'd be happy to set something up.
I'm free anywhere, so you guys, so get back.
I want him in front of me to ask my questions at this point.
Yeah, we'll talk to him first.
Prefer on a Friday if we could do that.
Okay.
I think that would work out best.
But let's have them in front of us first.
Okay, so you want to hold off on the tour until the ASBIL?
Until the ASBIL.
Please.
Sure.
Alright, next.
Make a motion to continue.
Make a motion to continue, four oh five Middlesex to our next meeting on February the sixth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next, four ninety-nine Potash Hill Road, continued from, are you coming up this time?
You're going to wait?
This, just, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
We'll be pushing this off to our next meeting, he's not coming tonight.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, to continue five hundred Potash Hill Road to our next meeting on February the sixth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, none. Alright, uh, Potash Hill, no, three fifty-two Middlesex Road, say you?
That's his number.
Mr. Chair. Map nineteen, parcel seven dash O, Ritalis Associate Realty Trust applicant for a special permit. Modification under section two seven, two point eight and four point three special permit and site plan review in section eight point one, major business complex. Of the Tingsboro zoning bylaws as well as any other permit relief as may be required for the construction of an additional four thousand square foot building to be used as trade shop advertised on the low side.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, probably a good idea. Attorney General, be knocking on your door.
Hi, thank you, for the record, Doug Lees from Land Engineering and Environmental Services, here with his head, it's Dave Trahan. For this site plan presentation, we were here at the, a month ago, we weren't at the last one, but we may were here. About a month ago, with basically the same project, well, same project, we just made a few changes to address the comments that were raised by T E C and the planning board at the previous meeting. Um, we reconfigured the parking behind the building, we added a few more spaces, so now there's, there's a, here we had for fire trucks to turn around in, and we went over that with the fire department and they were satisfied with the configuration. Um, and the new configuration allowed a few more parking spaces. So there's an increase of fifteen to twenty-three parking spaces for the proposed use in the back of the site. We adjusted the drainage to address some of the T E C comments and to address the additional pavement. So it all works now and it meets the stormwater standards. We got one review through with T E C and they had some suggestions that we incorporated into the plans we have presented tonight. But we submitted on Monday, I believe, we added some wheel, concrete wheel stops where some of the parking lot, parking spaces were, you kind of pull right into the building, and some bollards on the front of the building. And, uh, what do you call it, loading zone, we didn't have a loading zone, we made the changes to the plan, we lost our loading zone, we kind of dismissed it. So we had to add that back in, so there's a loading zone right now in this location, the state building. That was here before, the rendering's been spruced up a little bit, the garage doors have been made a little bit wider and the, the entrance doors have moved to the center and there's doors on the side now. We provide a, you know, access to the, paved access to the doors on the side. And there's a, on the site plan, there was a path going around, just a stone dust path to get around the back of the building, there's no doors in the back. Just to have access to the back of the building, so you can get back there if you have to, you know, fix something. So, I mean, those are really the changes we made to the plans, we added the electric and the gas. We addressed all T E C's comments and I believe we addressed the comments that the planning board have with the configuration. Parking in the back was kind of tight before we opened it up, provided a few more parking spaces.
Dave, you go over that.
Yep, yeah, they addressed all our comments, I think with the revisions, like you spoke about, they kind of removed the loading area. They put it back in for this one, has enough area to maneuver into it, it meets the zoning bylaws.
So you went through everything?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Uh, from a safety standpoint, I think it makes a lot of sense, you guys cleaned it up, so I'm happy.
Only one question, did we ever put any dumpsters there?
Oh, we did, we added dumpsters as part of, yes, thank you.
Good, don't get up Doug, sit down, please.
No, we put them there, I want to get cut off.
I just don't remember if we had them.
We just see dumpsters in here, we relocated them over here and then we added dumpsters in the back.
Done, Chaz.
Uh, I, I have no comment, other than, I guess my one question, so you've still got the other half of that?
Yes.
Lot, is that something coming down the road that you, would you share any of that with us now?
Just tell them, Dave.
I have no idea what we're going to put there, I'm open for suggestions, I like to put housing there, how do I put housing there?
Global aid district, maybe, right?
I would love to do retail in the front and some housing in the back, we have four and a half acres there, I mean, it's a big piece. I think, you know, I would like to do a fifty-five and over type thing in the back, that's where people want to be, up that area, you know, and some retail in the front. So you guys tell me how to do it.
Think people fifty-five and older want to be on that road right now?
I do, I would live there.
No, you wouldn't.
In the back, yeah, I would.
Well, you may be an improvement.
You could just walk over to the post office, that's basically, you know.
I can see it now.
I go to the brewery before the post office.
When I first met him over there, he had a boot on.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh.
Oh, public.
Public.
Anybody from the public here to speak, I am sorry, thank you.
Do we have to close the public?
Yep.
Close the public hearing?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none?
Oh, yeah. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the changes made for.
Well, you're approving the site plan.
Site plan.
I'm sorry, approve the site plan as is, three fifty-two Middlesex Road, map nineteen, parcel seven, as written.
Her plans dated one ten twenty-five.
Date, what was the date you got there?
January tenth.
January tenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice building.
Well, thank you, yeah, it'll be nice, we'll, uh, look like this at the front, we'll be back to the next.
Before we got to see you driving down the street, that's going to be the only problem.
Alright, next up, approval of minutes, January second, twenty twenty-five. Motion?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for January second, twenty twenty-five, as written?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing none. Okay, new business, uh, that the chairman did not reasonably anticipate.
You too, thanks.
Would be discussed, any new business? I think the only new business is with, I guess, the planner to work with them to see what they can put in at Flint's Corner, if it accommodates the board and the bylaws, whatever business we think would fit.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's, it's been one of those things that's kind of a little bit of a thorn in our side on this board for.
Well, like I said, though, we, we need, we need the commercial element in there.
Right, and that's what they're willing to do, so we, you know, we're.
I, I don't know, like I said, I'm not, I'm not a big fan because it wasn't proposed to us of being underneath, it was a separate building. To have the traffic and, you're going to have kids in there, it's rental property, you're going to have bicycles, you're going to.
That's correct.
Okay.
Off agenda soon.
Nope, but, but it's just anything, no, so the, you know, the whole thing is, is there is commercial property there, how that remains. But they have to buy by the new, you know, by the.
Excuse, yeah.
Mixed use and, you know, like they say, it's ambiguous on what kind of retail goes in there and how much retail goes in there. So I think it's incumbent upon us if we can work something out with them or not, and just see where.
They've got a much smaller footprint to work with.
Yep.
I mean, it's, it's our opportunity to really look at this because.
What kind of mixed use you're going to use on.
Right, I mean, we, we essentially lost half of what that overlay wasn't, if you look, take a step back and look at when this was created before I even moved here, was, you had two rather large parcels and now, we already lost one. So now this is the only one that's left for the mixed use overlay district, if you look at it that way, if the BAPs gets built.
I don't see the other part of that, you know, turning into residential, at this time, it's all commercial, you know, so.
Yeah, it is all.
But whether, what they do to it is up to them, two different entities, so we can't hold their feet to the fire, no matter who develops this site.
But it's in the mixed use overlay district.
Correct, so they have to have a component and that's what they're looking to try and see what the board feels, uh, the town needs. You know, they could put a business.
The services also.
Yep, it does.
I always thought that they would come to us with a little more tonight than what they did.
Costs, costs money to go and make sure you can make a.
A lot of money to go.
I think they wanted to tiptoe into it.
They've looked at the bylaw, they know what they need to do and to just come over and say, well, we're going to, you know, do a hundred and forty-four apartments and what do you guys think? You know, that.
Well, but I think they're looking.
They're not asking at all.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
True.
Forgiveness.
They're looking, from what I gather, is what kind of commercial property would be approved by this board? They're not saying nothing, they're saying, what do you think?
I get it.
Whatever. That's it, it's just food for thought, so.
I was just going to say.
Work of, oh, sorry, go ahead. Working with the planning department will help, so.
Yeah, I was just going to say in their defense a little bit, since the, the bylaw is so ambiguous a little bit. I think it was nice of them to come in because they could have just come in and tried to throw the bare minimum at you guys. And so I think they are trying to work with the board to make sure you guys are satisfied as well. Since it is so ambiguous, it can be interpreted in any number of ways and as little as commercials possible. So I think they're trying to make sure that, you know, before they go ahead and do anything, you guys are going to be happy with it, you know what I mean, so.
This is the problem with developments in Tingsboro, and I'll give you the whole, for instance, that I've done a hundred times. The fifty-five and olders that were proposed up at Whitman Woods, that whole area, that started out with fifty-five and older and an eighteen hole golf course. And look what we ended up with, the fifty-five and older, commercial properties, rental properties, the four apartment buildings, they grow legs. So this was proposed to us as these upscale condos.
No doubt.
You know what I mean, it was, they, they had said it was kind of an extension to the fifty-five and olders, it was a, it was beautiful for Tingsboro. Flint's Corner was going to be upgraded, like everything was going to change, and now we're just back to this and.
Bait and switch.
Yeah.
In their defense, they will be owning it, so if they're going to keep management.
It's still, it's still rental and you want to call the police station and see what they deal with for calls to these rental properties that are apartments? It's, it's astronomical.
Well, we'll just see what happens and that's all I'm saying, we can't, you know, judge a project before we see it.
It's going to be put out for the towns.
Two will count towards our S H I.
We're already where we need to be.
Yeah, but we need to stay there.
I think we have to, they have to have twenty percent of, of them to be affordable for all of them to count.
Yeah, so we want to be able to meet.
They were going to.
I think they said they would meet inclusionary.
Yeah.
But our inclusionary is only.
We got to pay attention, we're running out of land in Tingsboro.
Our inclusionary is only, uh, ten percent, I believe, and.
What's that?
To, to make, so if you did all of, like, to make all of those apartments count towards our S H I, it would have to be twenty percent of those be affordable units.
That's.
That's above and beyond what our inclusionary is, I think our inclusionary is at ten.
Mm-hmm.
So.
We're a little over, aren't we?
But if it was condos, then it's, so if it was condos, not all of them count towards our S H I. It's only the specific ones that are affordable. So that is, that is a positive, let's say they do a hundred, let's say they did a hundred and forty-four and they did twenty percent affordable, all a hundred and forty-four count.
I, I get that, but on the other aspect, what's the cost to the town? We already are looking for a police station, fire station, we don't have the money.
There's the trade off, right, I mean.
Huge trade off.
That's where, that's where I think us as a board and negotiating with, trying to figure out this to be a viable project. We get what we want, they get what they want, I think there's, there's a back and forth here that, I think it's, I, I don't think it's going to be, um, it, it's going to be a little lengthy to make it sure it works really for everybody.
Alright, we'll, we'll have to see what they propose.
Motion to adjourn?
No, old business. Old business?
Any update with the golf course? Anything? And they've reached out to say that anything's done, like, nothing?
After which address?
The golf course, on Clave?
On Clave.
Oh, on Clave.
I called the golf course, sorry.
We, I had spoken to Jessica Marsh, because you had sent over the pictures and stuff like that. And so I had a brief back and forth with her today, but we're going to try and get her into a meeting soon, I believe.
Perfect.
Alright, motion.
To adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No.